All right, it's one o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. It will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on the website for a listing and application. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, where my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are here today to do our town administrator finalist interviews. And our first interview today is Mr. James Kelly. Mr. Kelly, if you'd step up. Welcome. We have a number of questions today. And what we'll do is we'll go around from the board, one question at a time. Ask Mr. Kelly, if you have a follow-up, feel free to ask. And we'll go forward. So first today is our Vice Chair, Sarah Hewens. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, good afternoon. My first question to you is, why did you choose municipal government as your profession?
Well, originally, I worked in the state. And so it was not municipal government. My latest position in the state for 15 years, I was the Vice Chair and the Chair of the State Labor Board, the Board of Conciliation and Arbitration. And that was directly after I graduated from law school and had some experience as an attorney. All of our clientele at the Board were the municipalities and the people who worked in them. So it seemed like a proper progression after my three terms were up. It was five-year gubernatorial appointments. And I went and became the HR Administrator in the town of Sterling. I then became the HR Director in the town of Stoughton. And then I went to the town of Millbury to be the HR Director for the town and the school district. While there, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager came to a division of their vision for the community. And the Town Manager left. And for 18 months, I was acting as an interim Town Manager. I've always been a public servant. I've worked for the Legislature prior to the Labor Board. I've been an auditor for the state. I have served on numerous boards in my community. And I look at it as not only a profession, but an avocation to be a public servant.
I guess I just have a quick follow-up. So I guess my question is, is why? Because you were originally trained as a lawyer, as an attorney?
Well, in undergraduate work, my degree is in government and law. And I became a student of government. I enjoy it. I briefly practiced law. And I found that I would rather do it from the governmental point of view than from the district or various board forums that I ended up in when I was practicing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart?
Rural character is a term used often to describe Carver. What does rural character mean to you?
I live in the town of Norton. And I moved there when they were constructing the Great Woods Performing Arts Center, which became the Tweeter Center and became the Xfinity Center. And 495 was under construction. I moved to Norton because it was a mix of rural and some commercial, some industrial. And I'd say at that point, housing we had for 5,000 or 6,000 people. And I very much enjoyed when I was, from that point on, I was living in Norton. I was the chairman of the planning board for Norton during part of that period. After that, suburban sprawl came in. And we went from 24 farms to two. And I think the town lost a lot of its character. Because we used to have farm stands on the main road. We had a number of people who were involved in various activities, such as horseback riding along the trails in town. And we've lost a lot of that. So I think you have to value your agriculture. You have to value your open space. And you have to make sure that you preserve it.
Well, that, my second, my follow-up question was, how would you preserve it in Carver with the commercial, industrial, and residential growth that the town is seeing?
Well, first of all, it depends. There are a number of NGOs that are involved in the preservation of open space. And you encourage them. You have an inventory usually of open space, agricultural space through the planning department. And you make sure they know what's going on with that. You've got state programs that assist people with agricultural and recreational land and forest lands to keep it that way, various tax programs, et cetera. And you make sure the information is out there and you encourage it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pelvin?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
When was the last time you apologized publicly for making a wrong decision while doing your job?
I would say that the last time I apologized would have been when I presented a memo to the Board of Selectmen. And I did not anticipate some of their questions concerning it. It was concerning a labor contract. I thought that I had briefed them in the past. And I apologized and said that I asked for it to be put over to the next meeting. Met with the various folks from the Board who were, wanted things clarified individually and then put together a new memo. But I apologized at the meeting and asked the Chair to put it over. Not only apologized for not providing sufficient information, but also for wasting their time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
If you could pick two things that you're most proud of that you were accomplishing in your present job, what would they be?
First of all, getting through, getting everybody through COVID. It was a very difficult situation. I was able to, as soon as we knew what was going on, purchase sufficient laptops that we could go remote. If anybody who needed to and wanted to could go remote. And I was able to get all the personal protective gear. We were ahead of the curve that way. To the point that the town was able to give a lot of gear to the nursing homes in the area that had run out. And I think that helped lessen the impact of COVID on some of those establishments. And we were able to keep town services going. We had at least, we brought in all the Plexi glass and everything early. We found a provider who was able to get it to us. I have to compliment the Emergency Management Director and some of the various department managers in Town Hall because we worked as a team and we were able to get it done. And we brought 50% of the employees back into Town Hall in short order and kept the services being provided. We also combined a number of services where we had the Meals on Wheels combined with the library services so we could deliver tapes and books with the Meals on Wheels to the shut-in elderly population that we served. We were able to coordinate the food folks at the COA with the school so we could efficiently get food to the kids that needed the food as well as the folks served by the COA. So I'd say that's one thing. The second thing was, I was able to present a budget to the Board, be informed by the state of substantial cuts, redo the budget, explain why we had to do all the cuts in the various departments. The Board supported me and we went to town meeting. And this is what I'm very proud of. There was not one pass on one item. And the budget was voted in toto completely through the town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly, I'm up next. So I guess my question would be, how do you approach financial planning and budgeting as a financial management strategy?
Well, you have to know your background. So you'd look at previous budgets, previous financial plans. You should, most towns have a five-year capital plan. You'd make sure that you consulted that. You find out where you're going as far as your predictions for revenue, both state revenue, town revenue. You anticipate some impacts. I mean, COVID was not anticipated. And what it did to the meals tax was abysmal as far as revenue goes. I mean, but you then look at all of your revenue, meet with all your department heads, figure out what they're looking for, their wish list. And then you put it together, make your judgment calls. You inform the department heads what is going to be priorities and what isn't. And then you consult with the various boards that are above the department heads, that are independent boards. I assume the Board of Selectmen has already given the Town Administrator their priorities, directions, before he even starts the process. And you go forward with developing not only a budget, but a plan for the next couple of years. And it should coordinate with your contract negotiation plan. You can't negotiate labor contracts without looking at the impact of the budget and especially on future budgets. And not only does that include the town contracts, but it also includes the school contracts because that's a major employer in the town government.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. Could you give us an example or more of how you saved a town during a national financial crisis?
I think, I have a bumper sticker that I kept on my desk that said, "It's the spending, stupid." And I use that as a reminder. And I can't say that during a national crisis, because I always worried about saving the town money. It wasn't just during national crises. For example, when I became interim Town Manager in Millbury, I suspended all of the pilots that were not signed and sealed at that time and renegotiated a bunch of them and increased town revenue from the pilots by at least 50%. I have, I believe in sending RFPs out for all of the benefits that the employees have, health insurance, et cetera. And not only that, other insurances. And I cut insurance expenditures in every town I've worked in. I believe in collective purchasing, which saves money. I also believe in, as far as looking at various finances, especially for the future. In Millbury, I negotiated into the labor contracts a 1% employee contribution for OPEB. And I negotiated into the contracts. I changed in the split for town and employee for health insurance, which enabled us to save quite a bit of money. I also looked to the state government for the various grants and instituted a close relationship with the legislative delegation and ended up being at the top of the list for grants to redo, reconstruct four bridges in town that mass DOTs said were in danger. And that, Millbury was lucky in that the Senator who represented Millbury was also the chairman of the Legislative Committee that drafted the list for where the state transportation bond money went. But it's, so I can't say that it would be during national crises because I'm always looking to save public monies.
So just to be real specific, so nothing in particular during the Great Recession that we went through, 2008, 2009?
It was mainly to look at the various expenditures, like I said, for insurance that were under my purview, labor costs. I also looked to where we had some layoffs, bring back some folks that were retirees so that they could work and provide services at lesser cost than the full-time employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart?
The development of solar farms in Carver has exploded in recent years. What do you consider positives or negatives about having solar in a town like Carver?
Well, I know in my town, we had a controversy where we lost some cranberry bogs to solar. And some folks didn't want to see that happen. We didn't have the proper regulations in place at the time to do anything about it. Solar is a use that is, folks can avail themselves of. Its impact on the environment around it, for example, buffer zones, is important. And so your zoning laws and regulations have to make sure they take care of that. The other issue is the impact of the access to those and how it would impact on neighborhoods, open space, et cetera. As I said previously, if you could encourage the landowners to look at other uses, that would also help. But there are places for solar. And there are places that, amazing as it sounds, with land that is of minimal use for anything else, you can use it for solar. And part of that is making sure that if folks come in and are looking to develop solar, they are directed to the proper areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelvin?
How do you handle appointments to committees, boards? I'm sorry. How do you handle appointments to committees, boards with multiple applicants for the same position? And if only one applicant and he or she differs in conflicts with or publicly criticizes your job performance, do you appoint that person? And if the same person, how do you feel about the same person being appointed to numerous boards, committees, and commissions? So it's kind of multiple choice at the area?
Let me preface that by saying that if you have a plethora of applicants for positions, you're very lucky. Because a lot of times, it's tough to get people to volunteer their time for town boards and committees. But beyond that, no matter whether I was appointing someone to a board or committee, or whether I was interviewing someone for a job with the town, you want the most competent, qualified person sitting in that chair. I've been in government long enough to know that you're not going to please everybody all the time. So if people are complaining about your job performance or your, what you did on a particular issue, that shouldn't impact on putting the most competent person in the job. As far as multiple chairs, so appointing someone to multiple chairs, that depends on what the committee is. There are certain committees that you shouldn't see across between someone on a particular committee and someone on another committee. You have to make sure that there is somewhat of a division so you don't centralize someone decision-making on committees that should have oversight over other committees.
Okay. And my last sentence on this one was, what would you do to increase community involvement within the town?
It's important, first of all, to make sure folks know what's available. And then it's to encourage them. For example, we had a group that oversaw the cemeteries. And I had some folks from the veterans who were complaining about the upkeep in the cemeteries and the fact that some of the gravestones, the older ones, were damaged and needed repair. And in my next budget, I put increased funding for the cemeteries for that specific purpose. And told them, made a commitment to them that I'd do that, but I wanted a commitment from them to get me two folks to fill two of the chairs that were not filled in the cemetery commission. And in other words, put their effort where their mouth was. And they found me the two volunteers. So sometimes you might think a little bit outside the box. But a lot of times, if people are coming into Town Hall, and Town Administrator should have an open door policy and be willing to meet with people. But if they're coming into Town Hall on an issue and there's a board that has a vacancy that affects that issue, you try to recruit them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
Okay. Earlier I asked what you're most proud of. On the flip side, what are two things you feel you would need to work on?
One thing I find that I have to remind myself on a number of occasions is that I have to take the time to explain my, the issue that I'm addressing, to explain why it's important and to explain why I got to the point where I did as far as either giving advice to a board or making a decision. I find that sometimes I think people have a background on the issue that they don't. And so I have to remind myself to be very clear and explain myself more. And the other issue that I always remind myself is, don't bite off more than I can chew and make sure I delegate properly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Kelly, tell us a little bit about your approach to capital budgeting. And are you familiar with Carver's Capital Stabilization Fund?
I'm not familiar with your Capital Stabilization Fund. I am familiar with stabilization funds. I instituted one for buybacks when people leave in Millbury. While I was there, I was lucky in Millbury in that we had a policy, a longtime policy, that assigned a certain amount of our free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund or the Capital Fund. And so we were very well-funded because of that. And we were, we had, while I was there, had a new school. We started the process to build a new fire station. We had annual pump station for the sewer where we were replacing a pump station a year. We had that all planned out, the engineering timelines for all of them, as well as the construction timelines. So I'm familiar with not only funding capital projects, whether through grants. Because we were lucky in Millbury, we ended up with a $2 million grant for the reconstruction of the downtown from the state. But also in planning out the building needs and putting away the money that is necessary for it.
But can you just expand a little bit on your approach to capital budgeting? How do you, how do you balance the long-term need to plan for what's coming as opposed to the everyday demands on the, on the town budget that?
You need to definitely take, whether it's from free cash or another source, and bankroll money. Because for capital projects, you should have a five-year capital plan. Most towns do. I mean, usually an auditor will make that a finding if you do not have one. And you then expect the unexpected. For example, in Millbury, we had four bridges failing at the same time. But you definitely plan, you know the lifespan of most buildings. You can inspect most buildings and tell what's going on with them. As far as your roads, you've got chapter, you should have a Chapter 90 plan in place where you've got a schedule of road repairs. That should coordinate with the utility companies so they don't dig up a road that you've done a year or so in the past. We were very, both, all the communities I've worked in, we worked very closely with the utilities to make sure that didn't happen. We also made sure that as far as capital money, we, for our marijuana revenue, a percentage of that was dedicated by bylaw to capital proj, individual capital projects. It's penny-wise and pound-foolish not to put some money away for capital projects from and at the expense of the operational budget. It just happens. But it's the reality that things don't last forever.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens.
Thank you, Mr. Chick. My last question is, why do you want this job in particular?
Number one, it's a lot closer to home. The commute to Millbury was, you either went up 495 and through Worcester, or you went down into Rhode Island and then up 146. So the commute alone would make it very attractive. The town is a beautiful town. It's a town with great history. It's, as you implied, it's got a rural and agricultural mix to it as well as it's got commercial and it's got industrial. So it's got a very good tax base beyond some of the towns I've looked at. That it's very seriously screwed, skewed to the residential tax base. It's a town, I believe, that I would enjoy working in. I've not met a lot of the folks, but from the screening committee and the discussions we had, I enjoyed their questions. And I think, obviously, they enjoyed my answers. And so I find that I enjoy a good work environment. And Carver seems to have that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart.
Do you have any financial or professional relationships with someone who lives or owns a business in Carver?
No. Not that I know of.
Short answer.
Yeah.
Easy question.
All right. Mr. Belvin.
All right. My second question I got rid of. I'm not going to ask that one. But our town used to be big cranberry industry. Cranberry country motto, cranberry country is the motto. Growers are getting out of growing and selling out to solar companies. The kids are not interested in the industry. What would you suggest to be a new motto for Carver for the town? If we didn't have cranberries here, what would you, what would you think of a motto for Carver?
Carver moving into the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Belvin, just so I'm clear, are you not choosing to ask question number two?
Yeah, I'm not going to.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. We are back to, to myself here. So, Mr. Kelly, what are your thoughts on Carver's public safety departments, including, including the emergency management department?
The public safety departments, from what I understand, are very competent. And I do not have a lot of specific knowledge on them. I know that as a town manager or a town administrator, I would be relying on the experts to take care of public safety. Town administrator usually gets involved in the funding and advising the board in the case of senior position hiring. But most town administrators and town managers I know are not experts in public safety. And so you should defer to the management of the departments.
Are you familiar with the structure of Carver's public safety departments?
Well, I know you have a separate emergency management department. And you have police and fire. And I have experience as far as fire goes with both call departments, full-time professional departments, and hybrid.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's see. I think the only person has a question left that has not been answered is Ms. Bogart.
Yeah. If you were hired, how would you know that you were doing a good job after six months? What benchmarks or something would you look for to know it was going well?
Every senior management job that I've taken, I've come in, conferred with the various boards that were in oversight capacities and put a 90, 180 plan in place. And I would look to that to see as far as the six-month successful accomplishment. I would confer with the board of selectmen, both individually and as a board, to, like the former mayor of New York used to say all the time, I would be asking the question, how am I doing? And what do you think about how we did this job or this task? I enjoy a two-way conversation between managers and their workers. And I would be engaging in it with town employees. And I would hope that you folks would be engaging that way with me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, that's the end of the board's formal questions. Is there anything you'd like the board to be aware of? Anything you'd like to tell us?
It's up to you, whatever questions you've had. I know you're faced with a difficult task. It's a very difficult job to recruit and hire a town administrator or a town manager. I am very honored that you've called me in to talk to me. And I would be glad if you folks have any questions that occur to you through the chair to call me up and ask them.
Appreciate that. Is there anything else? Any member of the board have anything? I'd like to, no, go ahead. No. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Kelly, if you have any questions for us?
I think it's pretty straightforward that you're going to interview the candidates. And at some point, you would make a decision. As far as whoever you decide upon, what are the issues or the problems that they are going to face in the first 30, 60, 90 days in your, in your folks' mind? Are there any issue that you'd have, I'd have to, if I was chosen, that I'd have to hit the ground running on?
I think the issues are probably different with every member of the board. I think we all have, have different concerns. But certainly, budgeting, you know, COVID is still here and, and moving forward. We have a lot of budgetary challenges that face every small town. And that's certainly an ongoing challenge every year.
Right.
I don't know if any, any other members of the board want to add to that.
Sure. So I know that we're in the process now of, well, actually, I'm not sure I can ask this question because it might be a negotiation question. There's a lot of stuff going on here.
All right. And Mr. Belvin, did you have something?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much for coming in, and I appreciate it. Very thoughtful answers that you gave us. I appreciate. Some of the issues that we do have with our town is we have a redevelopment authority and urban renewal plan going on the north end of our town. And as always, solar is always an issue with residents. And other than that, I think I'm good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Kelly, we really appreciate you coming in today. And on behalf of the entire board, I want to thank you.
Well, I, as I said, I thank you for inviting me in. And I found the whole process with the search committee and with you folks today, an enjoyable process. So I want to compliment you on the way, and the search committee, on the way it was conducted. I can say that as a human resources professional. I've seen it done differently in other places, and this was done very well.
Well, and I'll just mention that we have our, the chair of our screening committee, Mr. Walsh, here with us. And I know the board appreciates the, the way he ran that committee and the way he connected things. So we appreciate it. Thank you. We will, we will be in touch.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next interview with Mr. LaFond is not scheduled until 2:30. So we are a little, a little ahead of schedule. Yes, I think that would be, that would be great. Why don't we take a brief recess while Ms. Weston reaches out to Mr. LaFond?
We'll let us know when you're, just a second.
I am ready, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Area 58, are you all set? All right. I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board on September 14th, 2021. These are our town administrator finalist interviews. Previously, we interviewed finalist James Kelly. And we are now going to interview finalist and also interim town administrator, Richard LaFond. Mr. LaFond, welcome.
Good to be here, Mr. Chairman.
And just so you know, what we are doing here is rotating through the board, one question at a time. And we'll be asking questions, and members may or may not have some type of follow-up. So anyway, we will begin with Ms. Hewens.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. My first question is, why did you choose municipal government as your profession?
Sometimes, sometimes I wonder. No. Well, I, I grew up, a family that was very much service-oriented.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just put this closer to you so you can talk into the microphone a little better?
Sure. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my parents were very involved, basically through the church. They, they still are. And so that's the atmosphere I grew up in, my brothers and I. You're always, when we were younger, whether you liked it or not, you were made to do good things. And eventually, that becomes part of who you are. Eventually, I ended up going to school, college and graduate school. And actually, didn't know there was a, a profession of town administration until I was in college. And that was kind of a natural place to go for me. I was a history major. So I think more of an example from my parents is what kind of, and my, my brothers too, in their own way, through the church or their own spiritual or more spiritual, they're constantly giving back to their own communities in some fashion. Is that?
Well, I'm going to have the same follow-up question for you that I had for the previous applicant. And so that, what you gave me is more of a background. But I want to know why municipal government as opposed to, or why government as opposed to some other sort of service? Some goal that you have.
Well, no, I know government is a natural place to be when you, when you're, when you want to help people, when you want to, when you think you can get things done. When you, you know, when you're young and you're going to save the world, you get, you get drawn into government. I, I haven't done it yet, but I'm still working on it. Municipal government is obviously a lot closer to the, the public. State government would have no, doesn't draw me at all. Certainly not federal government. But local government is where I think you can, you can get things done. And you can feel like you're, you can see what you're doing. You can see that you've actually accomplished something. You can see that you've actually accomplished something.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bogart.
Rural character is a term often used to describe Carver. What does rural character mean to you?
Rural character to me means, I think, the, the feel of a place as much as the sight, what something looks like, it's what it feels like. For instance, I, I know going back to the days of yore when Ann Miller and some of the older people who aren't around anymore probably were on the planning board. And there, one of the things they stressed, and I think was, became part of my thought process too, is how do you feel when you cross the town line? Do you know you're in Carver versus Wareham versus Plymouth? Does Carver have a feel to it that's different? And then, for instance, I gave this analogy to the screening committee too, that, you know, when, when you haven't seen your, your friend's child for a few years and you do and you realize how, how big he is, it's like, well, what happened? Well, you haven't seen somebody in a while. If you're seeing that person every day, you don't recognize how incremental things can get. I think that's the same when I came back to Carver. I was a little bit surprised by some of the, the look of some of North Carver. I'm not criticizing, but it didn't seem to, it was, I have that same feel. You know, the building design, signage. I think the town needs to be careful what, what people think of Carver when they cross the town line. I think it's also a matter of, you know, what do you see when you drive down the street? And I think there's a lot of tools, whether it's conservation subdivisions, setbacks. I know the town hasn't done much with TDRs. But I think the streetscape is very important. It's what makes you feel you're in Carver. Trees and bogs. Bogs, again, that's privately owned, open space, which we have to be very careful. We continue to support that industry. To me, that's rural. It's trees, it's open space, it's agricultural. And it's what you see when you drive down the street. It's what you feel when you're in Carver, what you feel when you cross the line. Is that sufficient?
Well, as a follow-up, how would you balance preserving rural character with industrial, commercial and residential growth?
Phew, that's a good one. Well, master planning is obviously a large part of it. I think whether it's the select board, whether it's the planning board, ZBA, whomever, I think it's important that we have a master plan that people buy into. Because without that, without that guideline, the guideline is adopted by the people. The people tell us what that means. We don't tell the people what rural character is. And as I mentioned, there are some tools to achieve that. I'm sorry, Ms. Bogart, the second part of your question, if you could.
How do you balance maintaining the character with the industrial, commercial and residential growth in the town?
I think that the town has a certain percentage of its tax base that's residential versus commercial and industrial. That's, I think it's about eighty-seven percent. It's a very large piece of our, of the town's real estate is residential. This town is always going to be predominantly residential. But there's really no way around that. In terms of balance, once again, I think it's a matter of the town deciding what it wants to be. You can't balance anything. The problem we have is, you know, it's a problem, there's private property. People own property. We can't tell people what to do on their property if it, if it's, if it's zoned appropriately. So to me, it's, 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 it may be less of a balance. But it's more of, are you accomplishing your goal of maintaining a community that feels rural? Because again, we really can't tell private citizens and people who are private, private owners. And we can't tell people who own agricultural land. We can't tell them what to do. So I think what we can do is to tell them how to do it through zoning and other strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin.
How do you handle appointments to committees, boards with multiple applicants for the same position? That's one. And if only one applicant, he or she differs or conflicts publicly, criticizes you of your job performance, do you appoint that person?
If you could repeat the first part. The second part is.
So how do you handle appointments to committees, boards with multiple applicants for the same position? Do that.
Well, although every once in a while, we, we miss the mark, we certainly try to have our positions out there properly advertised so that it does encourage applicants. I think you all know, unfortunately, it's not just Carver, but it's everywhere getting, getting, people who are able and willing to, to serve is not easy. And it's not a criticism, that's just the, the world we live in right now. So I think trying to properly advertise is the first way to try to get people. But ideally, it's nice to have two or three, four applicants, Bob. But usually, we don't have a lot of choice. I think that to the extent that you have, we have multiple applicants, you obviously want to find one that maybe have particular expertise. For instance, if you're, if you're trying to find a, an appointee to the Conservation Commission, if somebody has some, you know, particular background or expertise, I think that's important. If you're not talking about a special permitting authority, I think what you're looking to do is maybe encourage applicants who may not otherwise be engaged in government. It might be a good way to get people into government who in ten, fifteen, twenty years may still be there, but could be the future leaders of the town. So ideally, you try to get people involved who aren't involved already. As far as, Mr. Belvin, you want to now repeat the second part of your question?
No problem. If only one applicant and he or she differs or conflicts or publicly criticizes your job performance, would you appoint them?
I actually have done that quite a bit. I think when I was the town administrator here years ago, I, I believe I pointed many people to the finance committee who were not fans of mine at all. I personally don't have a problem with people criticizing me or having different opinions. That happens all the time. So it doesn't, it doesn't concern me to put people in those positions. In fact, usually, you find over a period of time, your, your views and opinions tend to come a lot closer together than you thought they were.
And the last part was this is, how, how, how do you handle the same, do you feel the same person appointed to a committee in different committees? How, how do you feel about that?
People serving on multiple boards and committees?
Yes.
I think that that's, I don't have an issue with that. If there aren't, you know, if there aren't other applicants for a position. I, I do, I know the, the town did pass a bylaw last year that limited people to no more than one special permitting authority. I think in all things being perfect, I, I think that's a good idea. If you're on the Conservation Commission, I mean, like a ZBA, I don't think you want to be sitting on, you know, something that came through another permitting authority. I know that that's probably unique to Carver. I'm not sure about that. I think, you know, that has caused, can cause some issues in terms of participation. But I think in a perfect world, that's different. I think if you're on, you know, non-perming authorities, I, I think that, you know, if there aren't other applicants then, or if there's a, there are some boards and committees that don't have a, a limit on the number of people who can be on that committee, I, I think it's fine. I think, you know, people want to participate in different, different aspects of the town. I, I encourage that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hoffman.
Thanks for being here. What two things have you accomplished in your present job that you're most proud of?
Got a long list, Mr. Hoffman. Let me, let me, let me, let me choose wisely. Well, two, two things. I think the first is, you know, I came in here pretty cold, April of, April, May of two thousand and twenty. I think it's two thousand and twenty. And I came in really right at the time when the spring town meeting, annual town meeting was, was on, on the doorstep. I think that my presence, my, my knowledge, my experience was very helpful in getting us through that first town meeting. In fact, let me, one of the things that, let me go back in a sec here. The first town meeting was very difficult. We ended up putting off some financial matters until a special town meeting. One of the things that may have been lost along the way, and, and I'm okay with that because I like to do my job quietly. The first year, we were very concerned about state aid, you know, early in the pandemic, very concerned about it. As it happened, the governor, the state legislature held us pretty harmless in terms of the state aid. I think I net, it was a decrease, a net decrease of about eighty thousand. And, and that was really in the, the assessments, not the, not the money itself. But what happened was is during that, in the projections for that fiscal year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the town had projected about half a million dollars in money that would be coming from solar growth and pilots. There was no way that money was going to come in, when it was projected to come in. And that was used to close a budget gap in a way that was simply going to leave us with a deficit. So dealing with that deficit, again, it looked good on paper, but it wasn't realistic. So, so it wasn't so much state aid, but it was dealing with the, the unrealistic revenue projections that we had to deal with. I think closing that gap, getting us to a special town meeting where we were able to restore our stabilization fund. And then getting us through this, this next annual town meeting in a very smooth process. I don't recall any contentiousness. I think we were all on the same team. And, and there's a lot of players, but I certainly, you know, this is a time to sell myself. So I think I had a lot to do with that. Now, the, the second piece is, once again, something that's a little bit of obscurity, is when I, I came back, it was really within a couple of weeks where I was elected to be the chair of the Gateway Health Group. And again, that's not something people pay a lot of attention to. And once again, I'm fine with that. That's, that's my job to do such things. I started a health group when I was here the first time and included about a half a dozen districts, communities, districts. The town, we got away from the county, the old county system. And, and we saved a lot of money back then. We continue to save a lot of money. Unfortunately, it had been significantly neglected over the last, since the years I've been gone. There's been a, a lack of, it's been rudderless. I would say within two or three years, it would probably cease to exist. And then the town would probably be at the mercy of other, either insurers or consortiums. It's okay to be part of a consortium, but not when you're a town that's closer, you know, south, you know, further away from Boston. We were a town, like some of the towns around us, that we would be subsidizing other towns in groups that are closer to Boston. We would really be at the mercy of some of these other communities in, in insurance consortiums. So that was a, that was a big deal. And again, it kind of goes under the radar screen. And like I said, that was going to be defunct in two or three years. Now we're in a situation, we managed to hold on to one of the communities that was at one foot out the door. We're probably going to get at least one of the communities back that has left. And where, where there is other communities in the South Shore, Southeast and Mass that we're talking about, I think we can grow the group in probably the next year or two. As you all well aware, you know, the largest fixed cost in any community is health insurance by far. So to the extent that we, you know, solidify and don't have the peaks and valleys of, of, of fixed costs that we can't depend upon, that's, that's a problem if we don't address it. And I think I addressed it a year, a couple of years ago, and I'm addressing it again. And keep in mind, that's not something anyone tells me that has to be done. I know that's something that has to be done.
Thank you.
I got a whole list here.
Thank you. I am up next. So, Mr. LaFond, can you just tell us a little bit about your approach to financial planning and budgeting as it's, as it relates to a financial management strategy?
Sure. I think to me, you know, financial planning starts well in advance. You actually probably at least one fiscal year ahead. I am a proponent of long-term financial planning. In fact, I, I wrote the first five-year revenue expenditure plan for this town probably around nineteen ninety-six, probably around there. And you, I don't know, I used to do these presentations and everybody's eyes would roll. And it's, oh, my God, here he goes again. But it's a useful exercise. And I think it's particularly useful because you can focus on those factors that matter. You know, how often do we get, you know, hung up on, well, two hundred dollars for animal control? Or, you know, or, you know, two thousand dollars for recreation? When, when those aren't the issues that shape what we do. And the, the good thing about a good revenue expenditure forecast is that I think it helps us focus on those issues that make a difference, whether it's fixed costs or whether it's, you know, you know, you know, three years of a three percent COLA, you know, for non-union people or unions. To me, it starts with some realistic, long-term planning. One of the things that, that I think we can do better on here in Carver is that we do, in our policies, we do a ten-year revenue projection. Well, a ten-year revenue projection without a ten-year expenditure projection doesn't, doesn't really, doesn't really help too much. I, I think that you have to look down the road. And I think five years is appropriate. Ten years, it's just too much because there's so many factors that can change in ten years. That's why I think a more realistic approach is about five years. Because I think you can, you can then, you can reasonably project your, your costs over five years and match that with, with your revenue projection. So to me, that's where, you know, four, five, six years of planning in advance, I think that's how you start, should start every budget process and have all the, the powers that be understand, you know, what those factors are. Did I stray, Mr. Chairman?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens.
Thank you. Can you give us an, an example or more than one example of how you saved a town during a national financial crisis? I'm thinking particularly, as I said to the previous interviewee, the, the Great Recession.
Oh, we're talking about the, the early nineties.
Either one, then or in two thousand eight?
Yeah.
The other, been a few.
Well, I do believe going back in time, about two thousand, well, once again, just, you know, in terms of, you know, helping town, two thousand and eight would have, would have been Carver dealing with, you know, trying to reduce fixed costs. I, I also believe we had a project, I think it was a, a transfer, transformer up in North, North Carver where it caused a little bit of a stir. But we were able to, let's say, facilitate that. I think we saved about, I think about one and a half million dollars. I, I still remember Pat Mahar, who was the business manager, calling up and thanking me profusely. I probably had less to do with it than I let on at that time. But that was, that was one in particular that, that I recall. I can't, I can't say that there's, that I recall anything else specifically. I'll remember that as I walk out the door.
Well, that, that was the one I was thinking of because we were slated to lose about twelve teachers.
Oh. And, and like I said, I, I think there are some of these elements that, you know, you can't wait until the crisis. You have to prepare for the crisis, just to the extent that you can. And, and dealing with, you know, fixed costs, putting yourself in a position where, you know, God forbid, you, you know, refinance some of your debt. I mean, you know, just like your home budget, there are some things you might be able to do. Fortunately, a lot of times during these major crises, there is ultimately some state, federal and state aid at some point. But that usually isn't there in time to keep the trains running. So things, things are tough.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart.
The development of solar farms in Carver has exploded in recent years. What do you consider positives or negatives of solar farms in a town like Carver?
I think it's positive to the extent that you can keep development that is less costly in terms of service requirements. I think it's helpful to the extent that you can keep some agricultural land, agricultural, so that some of these owners don't have to sell their property. I think it's helpful to the extent that you can get some sort of pilot money. But my concern is, and I, by the way, I think the town's done a pretty good job with this, is that, is that you can't, that it's this buffer, you can't see them from the, from the street, the roads, the, so that you don't feel like, you know, that there's a solar farm near you, that you've done, unless you're in a helicopter. I don't want to know that there's a solar farm down the street unless I'm in a helicopter. So, I think that's important, that, what, what, back to your earlier question about rural character, I don't think that seeing solar panels helps the rural character, but I do think the benefits of keeping land agriculture, keeping land from being developed in other ways, I think that's a real positive. I, to the extent that, you know, pilot money is good, but I would sacrifice the pilot money if it got in the way of maintaining the character of the town visually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
I'll, on town, our town used to be big cranberry industry, as cranberry country was our motto. Grows are getting out of the business and selling out to solar companies, their kids are not interested in this industry. What would you suggest a new motto for the town of Carver be?
The current motto is...
Well, it's cranberry country.
Okay, I've heard different, different mottos, so, okay.
Conservation Commission has that, so I figured I took that.
What would I think is the new motto for Carver? LaFawn country's not going to work for you, Mr. Belvin?
No.
No? It's not solar country, I can tell you that right now. The new motto for Carver? I kind of still like, I still kind of like cranberry country. I don't think, I don't think we give up on that personally. So, I'm, I'm deferring that to another day when I think of a good one, if you don't mind.
Mr. Hoffman?
Okay. Really asked what two things you were most proud of. What two things do you feel you need to work on?
I think, I think that I can, as much as I believe that I facilitate really good relationships between departments, I can do a little bit of a better job, you know, bringing them together more physically. I think I can do, you know, I could, more department head meetings, a little, little more, and there's a lot of camaraderie, but we have new, new officials coming in, new, and I, and I think it's probably more important than ever to, to maybe do a little bit of a better job in, in terms of, you know, getting, facilitating a little bit more of a, of a unit. And I think we've got a very strong one, but I think I could probably do a little bit better at that. Are you making me do a second one, too, Jim?
Totally, it's totally up to you.
Well, if it's up to me, I'll pass. One's enough.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So, we're back to me. So, my second question, what is your approach to capital budgeting? And, well, the second part is, are you familiar with our capital stabilization fund? But I think we know the answer to that is yes.
Yes.
So, what is your approach to, to capital budgeting?
Well, I think, I think this town does a pretty good job of capital budgeting. I think the, the process that is used for determining needs is, I think that's fairly standard. However, in my past, I think I've probably done a little more of getting more people involved rather than, I know, there was a time, I think, you know, I think the Capital Outlay Committee, this is good, that it's, it's, it's kind of revitalized. In my most recent experience, it was a problem, because over a period of time, the town manager basically became the Capital Outlay Committee, and that, and presented a capital budget. I don't, I don't think that's ideal. I think having a good committee, I think a committee that is inclusive and makes, the committee makes priorities for the town, so that, you know, we're not, everyone's not fighting with each other over, you know, you know, what I need, what you need. I think that the Capital Stabilization Fund, which, by the way, that was, I started that back in 1822, somewhere around there, that's when we started segregating our growth and personal property tax into a, into a capital stabilization fund. I mean, the town has done a great job since then to grow that fund. But I think having some sense of dedicated revenue for capital is important, and I think having a more of a inclusive process with a good capital outlay committee, I think that's important. And I think, I think we're set up to do that a little bit better than has happened in the last few years, and that's not a criticism, that's just, that just speaks to the difficulty of getting people to participate. Because when that happens, then guess what? Town manager's the capital outlay committee, and that's, that's ideally not what you want. So, I think it's, you know, dedicated revenue and a good process to put together your needs and kind of, and prioritize those needs. I will say, one of the, one of the challenges is, and I know that's a challenge here in Carver, is, you know, when you, you know, when you dedicate, delegate, dedicate recurring revenue, at some point, you know, the rubber meets the road, and, you know, you've got to, you've got to pay the bills, you know, the, you know, kids need teachers, and police need police officers, I mean, town needs police officers. So, where is that line between which is more important, capital or operating? I think that's ultimately a policy decision, but I, I think that, that I, at some point, there may be, we might have to strike a balance there that might be a little bit different. But again, that's, those are both a policy decisions. Those aren't decisions that are necessarily made by the town administrator, although he or she will, you know, make some recommendations to that extent. But I know we're segregating a lot of one-time funds, you know, solar money, et cetera, and the fund itself, which is built on recurring operating funds and the growth in those operating funds, and it's a good, it's a good model. I, I do know, though, that, and I think all you hear it, too, that, that it's, you know, the rubber meets the road at some point, and you hear it. I think people, people will, some people will tell you, well, they don't, they don't pay their taxes for us to put it in a, you know, a stabilization fund when their kids don't have teachers. We don't put our, pay taxes so that you can save it, you know, while we don't have police officers. So, it's, it's a difficult balance, and I think the town has done a pretty good job with it, but it's not going to get any easier.
Thank you. Ms. Younts?
Thank you. My last question is, why do you want this job in particular, in Carver?
Well, I, I think, you know, I was here when my, I had a young family. My, my, I was fortunate to be able to get this job. I was the first town administrator and kind of, kind of built this to some extent. My kids would come down a couple of times a week, my wife, they'd go to the library, they'd go to the playground, they'd go to Plainjane's, and it, it kind of became a, you know, kind of a family-type ritual, so I always kind of felt like, you know, I felt home here. I mean, that's more of an emotional thing rather than, geez, I want this job. I, I think, you know, I had some, my, my memories of working with some of the best public officials I've ever worked with are still, still strong. I mean, this is where I dropped names shamelessly, you know, Reverend Merritt, who I saw last night over at the firefighter dinner, you know, Dick Ward, Frank Casey, I mean, just Bernadette, I mean, this is tough when you actually start saying people's names, because you don't know when to stop, but they, people made me feel like I was part of this community, not, not just somebody who worked for the community. So, given the opportunity to come back, it, it was an easy decision to make for me, and, and again, this is, I'm, I feel connected here, more than I would feel connected anywhere else. So, it's more than just a job for me. That's the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart?
Do you have any financial or professional relationships with anyone who lives or works in Carver?
Well, I do have friendships, you know, from, that I established while I was in Carver. Those, those don't go away. Personal or financial relationships, certainly?
Professional.
Professional. Well, there are people who used to be employees of this town that I would, they don't work here anymore, that I would consider, I would still consider them maybe professional colleagues to some extent. If you let me think a little while longer, I could probably, you know, but I don't have any financial interest in Carver, so to speak. I don't have any ties to a developer or a project. I don't have any, anything like that, if that's...
That was more, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
When was the last time you apologized publicly for making the wrong decision while doing your job?
Feel like all I do is apologize. I guess it depends on what scale you're talking about, Bob. I mean, I think on a, you know, a meeting-by-meeting basis, there are times when, when I, I feel like, okay, I may have been able to do a little better job on this, you know, maybe, maybe it's providing the board information, or, or maybe I should have put this in front of the board earlier, and I think those are the types of things I think you've probably heard me apologize for here and there. But if you're, if you're talking about a major issue, I don't recall having done that, but I, I don't have any problem doing that. Trust me, I am, I am very humble, I come from humble people, and, and if something goes wrong, then, you know, I own it, even if, even if it was Elaine, you know, I own it.
Oh, and I picked your motto for you? Just to let you know, Rick, I picked your motto for you. You already said it, feel like home.
Well, I like that. I'm sorry, Elaine, that was...
Sorry, I just had to put that in there.
All right, thank you.
It's going to be a long day tomorrow.
My, the last question from, from me, what are your thoughts on Carver's public safety departments, including the emergency management department?
Well, obviously, I've got a lot of history here, and I, I think that we become a little too cozy when we look at our services and say, well, isn't this great? You know, well, this, this is great because we've made it great. I think the way the, the departments interact with our police being first responders, and a lot of times, they're the first on scene, and they're trained to deal with that. That's not necessarily the case everywhere, but it's part of the system that makes it work. Obviously, you know, the, the way that our EMS works is, is the fact that we don't have any full-time employees other than the, the chief, it's a model, I mean, we're dealing with the fiscal impact analysis right now in Route 44, and the woman who's doing that is just astounded by how this town does business. So, that, that operation is a well-oiled machine, even though it's unique. We all know the benefits of our call fire department, which, again, is a model organization, but one of the things that I often caution is that, you know, it, it, it doesn't take a whole lot to start going down the wrong road. I mean, we, it's a strong organization, but, but to the extent we start, you know, going down the road, the danger of needing, you know, 24/7 fire service, it only takes a little bit to start that chink in the armor that, you know, in 15 or 20 years, you know, the, the system isn't going to work anymore, and I think this Route 44 project is a danger. I think we'll, we'll deal with it, but it's, it's very easy, and I think that's why it's important to have a chief and other public safety officials and, you know, the leaders of the town who are dedicated to keeping this in, in place. Some of the challenges are, you know, and we, we have to support this, so we're going to, we're going to end up with full-time, full-time firefighters, you know. As you know, we dedicate a lot of funds, capital funds, to our fire department. Our call firefighters, our on-call firefighters, you know, need good equipment. We have to, these people deserve good equipment, or, you know, they don't have to work here. This is not their livelihood. We have to treat them as if they're, you know, an asset, you know, not just a widget in a bigger machine. We also have to, I know one of the principles is that if somebody gets in a vehicle in North Carver, that vehicle has to be very similar to the one in South Carver. And so, that means we have to, we have to invest in our equipment. I mean, a $700,000 fire department is unheard of, the ability for them to put boots on the ground so quickly and so many, it's, it's astounding. But these people do not have to be here. It's important that we, we treat them well, we treat them with good equipment, because if that starts to fail, you can look at about a $2.7 million fire budget, and then every other, everything else we want to do in this town, from education to recreation, taking care of our buildings, that, that is just not going to happen, so. It's necessary to keep our EMS and fire separate, there's no question about that. It doesn't work any other way, and it's necessary to have our police be, you know, qualified first responders. When, you know, when all those pieces of the engine are working together, then it works, but we have to protect this. It doesn't just happen.
Thank you. Our final question for the day goes to you, Ms. Bogart.
If hired, how would you know you were doing a good job after six months? What benchmarks or signs would you look for?
Well, I don't expect anyone to tell me I'm doing a good job, so that's not, that's not the first place I would look. I think you're doing a good job when, when people don't feel the need to tell you you're doing a good job. When people have confidence in the organization and in the leadership of the organization, when it's, when it's quiet, when things are, a well-oiled machine doesn't make a lot of noise. Government should be boring. Good government is boring. When government gets exciting, there's usually a problem. So, I think to the extent that we keep it boring and that the trains run smoothly, I, I think that's an indication that things are going pretty well. And if the, the board will have goals and objectives, and to the extent that, that you can assess your, your progress, and again, that's, that's something that's more of internal between, between the board and the town administrator and staff, you can at least see some benchmarks as you go along, but I, I think a quiet, boring government is a sign that things are going well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of questions from the board. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Hearing nothing. Mr. LaFawn, is there anything else you'd like to tell the board?
I would. Thank you. I, I've been accused of being long-winded, and I think you're going to know why in a second, so, first of all, I just want, I want to point out a little bit, and I think you, you all know it, you know, being in the, in the business, you know, this, more and more, you know, government is subject to, you know, negativity, and it's getting to the point where it's somewhere between negative and sometimes nasty. And as officials, you all see this, you all know it, you're the subjects to this yourself, and it is a little bit different when you make a living doing this. It can be a little, little nerve-wracking. Social media can be a great asset, it can also be difficult. I know you're also, you're all subject to the, you know, the highs and the lows. One of the things that I know from my, my peer group, a lot of younger people, a lot of older people, we're kind of reasonably connected, and everybody... older people, we're kind of reasonably connected. And everybody will tell you that this is, this is getting tougher. And it's not because of the X's and O's, it's just because the environment is getting difficult. So, I think that it's important that the relationships sustain each other. Because once it starts falling apart, the organization is going to suffer. So, I think the tone that the board sets and the tone that is set by all of us for the organization is, is, is very, very, it's, it's important. I would like to just add, and this goes back to a question by, by Sarah, that, you know, I care about the people of this town, I care about the history, the geography. I have the technical expertise that is necessary, finance, personnel, collective bargaining. I think I have shown that I, I mean, I am able to facilitate some good working environments, sometimes between people who don't even get along themselves. And I, I take some level of pride in that. You know, I, I believe in the democratic process, even when I don't always like it. I believe in it. If you stop believing in it, then you're in the wrong business. I think we've already discussed it. I, I know how critical some of these, and precious some of our services are here, our public safety. I want to work to it, and I know how to work towards the long-term capital and operational needs of the town. I already discussed that a little bit with our health group. I work long days, I'm in early, I'm out late, I do nights, I do weekends, I do holidays, whatever it takes. I do what it takes to get this job done. I like being part of the community. I like to go to events, I like, you know, when the high school kids are doing a car wash, I make sure I go to the car wash. I think it's important. I have the strength and the principles to stand up for people. I've been in this situation many times when department heads and staff are under attack, and I stand up for those people. And a lot of times, it's to my own detriment. So, if you want someone who can do that, if you want somebody who's willing and able to stand up, as I said, even to my own detriment, somebody who is able and willing to stand up for the public interest over the private interests, and again, I've been there, I've done it, and it stinks, but you got to do it. And I've just, I think, discussed with you, Mark and Sarah, not that, fairly recently, and I think I did it rather emotionally, that it's difficult to do that, you know. And I think what I use is, you know, when you got to go home and tell your wife that you're going to lose your job, and you know why, and you know when, but it's because I'm standing up for what's right, you want someone who can do that. And guess what? That's, that happens to be me. My speech has ended.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LaFawn.
Thank you. Appreciate the time and allowing me to get on my soapbox a little bit.
We appreciate it.
I don't often do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and vote, or possible vote, on the appointment of a town administrator. I wanted this included in the agenda in case the board felt that they were prepared to move forward. I think it's probably likely that the board would like to take some time to reflect on what they've heard, but I'll leave that up to the board. Thoughts?
I'll make a motion that we put off any discussion for the next 14 days.
Let's not put a time limit on it, because I know our chair is looking for us to have a very specific meeting.
Yeah, depending on what our meeting schedule is, we may not want to put a definite. I'll leave that up to you. You made the motion, so.
All right, I'll rescind that. I'll do it. I take no action on this item then. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
So, how about just with postponing of this vote? Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, we can postpone it to a future meeting.
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting, there is, there is nothing. And the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating an employment agreement with, with non-union personnel, the town administrator, there's, there's no need for that executive session, obviously. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.